We good? All right, great. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I want to welcome you all to the January 17th, 2019, meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners, our first meeting for this year. I note the presence of all three Commissioners, and I'm going to ask Mr. Mike Bowman to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
............................................................
I want to note the presence of our Controller, Karen Sanchez. Thank you. Any other elected? And our Recorder, Deet, Jean Sword. Thank you for joining us. So I have a couple of quick, well, two quick and one not so quick, opening Commissioner comments. First, I would like to welcome Mr. Joshua Stein to the dais as our new county solicitor for his first official meeting.
Thank you very much.
Second, I want to announce that executive session was held on January 4th, 2019 regarding litigation matters. And third, I am very excited this morning to announce a new policy that the county is beginning as of February 1st. Starting February 1st, eligible Montgomery County employees will be able to take up to six weeks of paid parental leave during the 12 months immediately following the birth, adoption, guardianship, or foster care placement of a child. We are implementing this policy because, first and foremost, paid paternal, I'm sorry, paid parental leave is simply the right thing to do for our employees and their families. And paid parental leave is also a smart investment in our employees, one that has been shown to increase morale and reduce turnover. Montgomery County joins a national trend by government employers that are improving the compensation and benefit packages they offer their employees. According to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, in 2018, 26% of local government workers had access to paid family leave, up from just 15% in 2016. We're proud here in Montgomery County to be on the forefront of this trend. We fully expect this policy will improve our ability to recruit and retain high-quality employees to better serve our residents. The paid parental leave policy will apply to all full-time employees, regardless of gender, who are not represented by a union or bargaining unit. The six weeks paid leave can be taken as a block of time, or on an intermittent basis, any time during that first year of the birth, adoption, guardianship, or foster care placement. It will run concurrent with the 12-week Family and Medical Leave Act that an employer, an employee may take, and an employee will still be able to use a combination of their saved sick time, vacation time, or personal time to cover the remaining leave offered under FMLA. The costs associated with this change were planned for in our 2019 budget, and the complete policy will be posted on the employee Intranet by the end of today. Make sure, if you have any questions, that you contact Human Resources. And I just want to thank Donna Pardue, and Barbara O'Malley, and Dean D'Orton, and Lisa Altisziak, all of whom did a lot of work and research to make sure that we got this policy right. So thank everyone for their assistance on that. As a physician and an advocate for healthy communities and healthy families, it's important to note that the United States is one of only eight countries worldwide, and the only industrialized country, that does not have any sort of mandated paid maternity leave. I'm very pleased that Montgomery County is leading the way to institute this policy for our employees and their families. Thank you. All right. And with that, we will move on to approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the December 13th, 2018, meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Gale.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, Ms. Holton, 2040 update.
With the beginning of 2019, I'm happy to present to you the 2019 implementation report for the Montco 2040 Comprehensive Plan. The county adopted this plan in 2015, so it's been about four years. And each year, we provide an update on how we're meeting and, and working towards our goals in the plan, what we did in 2018 to direct our actions towards the goals in the plan, and then what we're looking forward to in the year ahead, 2019. So the Comprehensive Plan is a framework for our built environment. We look at coordinating all land development and growth in the, in the county, including our transportation improvement projects. But it's also a strategic plan for the county. It's a policy guide for county actions. We work with a number of our county departments, our local agencies, and other agency partners to, to implement the plan in a variety of ways. There are three themes in the plan, and I'll just go through them each. These themes sort of are overarching and include a number of goals in them. The first theme is connected communities. People want to feel connected to their communities. They want to have physical connections through trails and roads and so forth, but they also want to, to reach out and, and be connected to community activities, downtown locations, and other community facilities. So under this goal, it's a goal of the county to encourage and foster the collaboration and partnerships among our government entities, our businesses, institutions, schools, and other stakeholders. We are looking to improve transportation quality and expand options for our workers. We'd like to connect our county trails, and parks, and open spaces, and greenways, and also support the development and improvements in our downtowns and community destinations, including a number of focal points, cultural focal points across the county. So in 2018, I'm just going to provide the highlights here of our achievements. This is no means a, a full list. The full list is actually in the report that's in the back of the room, and it's available on our website. In 2018, the county went through a very rigorous and outward-facing process to procure new voting machines. And using that, that new process, we were looking to enhance voter confidence and security. We looked for a lot of public input and transparency in, in the purchase of machines to best fit our needs. We entered into the third year of the Implementation Grant Program for this Comprehensive Plan, and we provided funding to 14 projects in our municipalities across the county. We had a number of improvements in Norristown, in the county seat. We continued our Phase 3 of our Lafayette Street project. You can see the improvements in front of the Norristown Transportation Center coming to life, as well as providing a whole new gateway into Norristown. In addition, we continued the renovations of this building, creating a more modernized facade for the building and improving the operations of it. We also improved Trail Junction Center, which will be the connection between the Schuylkill and the Chester Valley Trails. That's right next to the Lafayette Street project. We hired a GIS manager to help us to implement our geographic information systems, to make sure that all of our data that we collected at the county can be utilized and available to the public. We'll be working on that in 2019. We adopted Bike Montco. This is a, a critical piece in, in connecting a bicycle network across the county, looking at how we can make bike lanes and other bike facilities a reality in the county and coordinate amongst our municipalities and PennDOT. So we completed the Schuylkill River Trail in Pottstown. There was a, a one-mile segment there that we built along Industrial Drive. Like I said, we improved the Trail Junction Center in Norristown. We kicked off the county's transportation program, grant program, which is about $1 million we allocated to our municipalities and projects they have to improve signal operations across the county and safety improvements at key intersections. And the county commissioners and senior staff continued their tradition of hosting town hall meetings in four locations across the county, connecting people with government and listening to the ideas and comments in our, in, across the county. Our bridge rehabilitation projects continued. We had 11 projects in the design phase in 2018. So in 2019, we worked with our, work with voter services and, and prepare our residents to use the new voting machines. We'll establish that public, online, interactive mapping system to provide that data to the public. We'll continue with the design and rehabilitation of our bridges. We're expecting three bridges to be completed construction in 2019, and three to begin work in 2019. We will construct the Penny Pack Trail, about a mile, a little short of a mile, from Byberry Road to Bucks County, and connect with Bucks County's extension of the Penny Pack Trail into, into Southampton. We'll complete the design for Cross County and Chester Valley Trails and begin to bid them and begin construction for them in 2019. And we'll continue to pursue other land conservation across the county in places where we are expanding our trail network. The second theme is sustainable places. The county is full of wonderful neighborhoods and communities. We'd like to sustain them in long-lasting and effective ways. We, investments that we make under, under this theme, investments that we make in our infrastructure network should be long-lasting, modern, resilient, green, energy-efficient. We should be improving our storm water management and reducing the impact of our most expensive hazard in the county that's flooding. Conserve our natural resources, our farmland. Provide opportunities for our residents to be healthy and have healthy lifestyles. Support housing and meet the needs of, of all people for housing in the county and protect our neighborhood character. So in 2018, we preserved five farms. We have additional settlements that are underway in 2019. We hosted seven household hazardous waste events, as well as tire collection and paper shredding events. We completed the household, I'm sorry, the Hazard Mitigation Plan with FEMA, and that was adopted and is in effect. We completed several park upgrades across the county. The exterior of the Sunrise Mill, Peter Wentz Farmstead was improved. We added a new pavilion there. We restored a barn at the Upper Schuylkill Valley Park. We continued our county trail challenge. And Public Safety completed their fire services study. In addition, the Office of Public Health distributed local and healthy food from Montgomery County Preserve Farm to a variety of populations that are in need across the county. We expanded in Veteran Services, the Veteran Shuttle Service, to connect veterans to healthcare locations. We've heard a long, a lot about this over the year from our Health Department about outreach on suicide prevention, mental health awareness, and school violence prevention. This year, we kicked off with the Housing and Community Development Department, the Commerce Department, and the Planning Commission kicked off an Affordable Housing Strategic Plan and established an Affordable Housing Advisory Board to move forward on some of the challenges that we face with affordable housing across the county. In 2019, we'll continue our Household Hazardous Waste Collection Events. We'll also be looking for a permanent Household Hazardous Waste Collection Site where residents would be able to have daily access to disposal of a variety of hazardous materials. Continue to work with our farmers on farmland preservation. We will be opening a new visitor center at the John James Audubon Center in Mill Grove, which completes sort of a, a whole suite of improvements that have occurred at the Audubon Center in Mill Grove. Promote storm water management. Our assets and infrastructure have weaved a bunch of storm water management improvements into their capital improvement program. And Public Safety will work on four studies to assist our municipalities in providing comprehensive fire safety, hazardous materials response, disaster mass care, and debris management. All right. And the final theme here is the vibrant economy. A strong economy is critical for all places, for our residents, for our businesses, and it enables us as a government to continue to grow our infrastructure and, and grow our economy. Under this goal, we have improvements to transportation access. We have encouraging development and transformative investment where infrastructure exists. We are seek, we are attempting to attract and retain our businesses and our vital community assets that draw businesses to Montgomery County and adapt to market changes flexibly. In 2018, we moved ahead several transportation projects, and I'll, I'll provide a map and a, and a couple slides on some of them. But just as, as an example, in one of our most successful office parks in the county along, in City Avenue, along Presidential Boulevard, they reconfigured the road and made it more pedestrian-friendly and also safer for traffic. We hosted a Future of Manufacturing event in October with Commerce Department. We had major events that Valley Forge Visitors Tourism Convention Board provided or encouraged in our county, like Cirque du Soleil, Volta, which drew 86,000 visitors and a number of dollars in tourism spending, which I think you'll hear about later.
Don't steal too much of my spender. He'll get upset.
I know. Sorry.
Bring that up.
And a number of economic, major economic investments have occurred in the county. CHOP announced a new 52-bed hospital in King of Prussia. Gwinnett Mercy announced an expansion into a property that was once owned by Merck, which would double their campus size. In 2019, we continue our advocacy for new turnpike interchanges along the turnpike through Montgomery County, one of which is funded at Lafayette Street in Norristown. We'll continue to work with the Tourism Convention Board to promote our assets in the county, our regional destinations. And the Commerce Department is working to launch a microsite with really interesting economic development tools and data about Montgomery County that will help market us beyond just the county base here. We are looking forward to the 2020 census, and we've established a committee to make sure that we do our best to get everybody counted. We'll continue to support our public transportation investments in 2019. To give you a snapshot of how we're doing in terms of meeting our, our land development and growth aspirations that are set in the, in the Comprehensive Plan, we have a future land development map in that plan. And this map shows where all new housing construction has occurred in the last year, 2017, and how that fits into our plan, whether that development occurred in a designated growth area, or whether it was outside of that in a conservation or rural area. This shows that 95% of all of our development did occur in growth areas. We had very small percentages of units or new housing built outside in rural areas. And those rural areas are not meant to be completely undeveloped. So we expect to see this, about this amount of development to occur in rural areas. So we are making investments and seeing growth where infrastructure exists, as described in the plan. Non-residential construction, so office, commercial, retail development, institutional projects, like hospitals, or things of that nature. Again, this shows the orange dots are within our designated growth areas, and the green dots are outside of it. And 99% of all of that growth did occur in, in growth areas in the county. And on the transportation side, we have a future transportation map that shows all transportation projects that were programmed in a 12-year capital program for the region. And this shows progress on that. Since 2015, we've had 18 projects that are either in design or engineering, and eight projects that are completed. We only have six projects that haven't gotten out of the gate yet. So for a, a plan that has a horizon of 2040, this is a pretty good, a good track record. Vision roadway projects. We also had a, a number of projects that no funding had been identified for, to improve our transportation network. A lot of these are intersection improvements, or safety improvements, capacity-enhancing projects. And again, these moved forward. 11 projects are in design or engineering, and two projects are actually completed because of the competitive transportation funding grant programs that are provided either through PennDOT, DVRPC, our, our Regional Planning Commission, and to some extent with help from the county. So we're excited to see some of the projects that we couldn't even imagine how we would fund them in 2015 are actually moving forward. So that is the implementation report for 2019, and what we have to look forward to. And I did want to make an announcement about the county's Implementation Grant Program. I'm going to try to do this, switch slides here, and show you. We have a grant program that was established three years ago, the 2040 Implementation Grant Program. This program provides funds to our municipalities with a maximum grant award of being 200,000. We require a local match of 20% of the grant to be provided by the municipality or their partners. The county has set aside $1.5 million for this program, and it's meant to fund projects that advance the goals in the Comprehensive Plan. We have focus categories identified in the grant program, but you can apply for any projects that sort of fit the Comprehensive Plan goals. The focus categories are Walk Montco and Bike Montco, so improvements to our pedestrian and bike networks. Adaptation and resiliency, which is focused on storm water management and making our infrastructure and our open spaces more resilient in, in primarily flooding events. And support for our downtowns and destinations. So those are the three focus categories. To date, over the last three rounds, we've received 68 applications. We've awarded $3.9 million. 35 municipalities have received funding, and we've had $8 million in requests. And you can see on the chart there that there's a strong interest in this program, and it's growing. So last year, we had over $3.5 million in requests. We were only able to award, of course, that $1.5 million. And there, it was a good year, and I'll show you some of the results of the program to date. So 2016, 2017 grants that we awarded have come to life. We have in Schwanksville, a mural along Main Street. In, in Collegeville, along, at Ursinus College, there's a new crosswalk, signalized crosswalk. We have a new sidewalk in Lower Moreland connecting along Welsh Road to our Penny Pack Trail, our Penny Pack Trail, Trailhead there. And in Conja Hocken, we have an example of green parking. In 2018, Douglas Township completed an entire renovation of their municipal parking lot that serves not only their municipal building, but athletic fields. This demonstrates green parking and how we can manage storm water with pervious paving and swales. We also completed, or helped to complete, the Wayfinding Signage Program in Upper Perkyomen Region with over 80 signs in the region. And we helped to light some pickleball courts in Upper Gwinnett, one of our favorites, helping people get out even after, even after dark, which comes early. In 2018, we also had Hatfield complete their Chestnut Street and Frick's Trail Extension. And Horsham improved their sidewalks along Dresser Road. And you can see beforehand, there was no place for people to stand and wait for the bus, and now with the sidewalk, at least you have, have a way to get to the, to the bus stop and to all the businesses along there. And Schwanksville, in addition to their mural that they completed in 2016, they have renovated this parking lot in front of their fire company, which is soon to become their new location of their Borough Hall. They have a new plaza, and the plantings, of course, have not come to life yet, but they soon will. So all the pavers are in. You have a connection to the Perkyomen Trail here that's much safer than it was before. And the heart of Schwanksville is coming, coming together nicely. So applications are due on March 1st. All of the information is available on the website for the implementation report and for the grant program, montcopa.org/montco2040.
Great. Well, thank you, Ms. Holton. That was a really great presentation. I really love hearing this every year for several reasons. One is, when this document was originally created, I know Commissioner Shapiro was very clear that this thing be a living, breathing document and not just sit on the shelf somewhere and gather dust. But it's obvious why that was so important. It is a document that I use to hold ourselves accountable, to make sure that we're actually doing all the things that we said we were going to do. And I think it's so easy in government to say, oh, we're going to do X, and X moves over here, and no one ever actually follows up and makes sure it was done. So I think just this annual hard stop and taking a look at what did we plan to do? What did we accomplish is critically important. I'm also so happy that this Comprehensive Plan has been a guide to our work in a very integrated way. It helps people work across departments and break down some of those silos that tend to creep up in, in any business organization, frankly. And so this work really keeps us all going down the same path together, and I think often highlighting ways that departments can work together that they may not have previously considered. And finally, I'm, I'm always really interested to see where our growth has occurred over the past year. I think probably most of the people in this room know that people move to Montgomery County because they want to be close to the city, they want to be close to public transportation, but they love our trails, they love our parks, they love our open space. And I think one of the things that is the trickiest for us to balance is we need to grow. We have to grow as a community, but we want to make sure we grow in the right way, you know, a way that preserves the characteristics of our communities that people love and why they moved here in the first place. So it's always so encouraging to me to see that our vast majority of our growth is happening where we would prefer it to happen, in, in order to balance the multiple needs and desires and quality of life that people are looking for who live here. And I think it also highlights the importance of this document to help kind of nudge that growth into those places. So, great work. Thanks to your whole team. It's, it's really incredible what gets accomplished every year, and I look forward to a very exciting 2019.
Jody, thanks for a very comprehensive report. What impresses me is when you look at the grants is how we're careful to get them across the county. I mean, we're a very large county, but we saw programs in Upper Perk, and Schwanksville, Hatfield, Conja Hocken. So that really says to me that our municipalities are getting the word and they're putting in the projects, but we're doing a good job of making sure that it's a county-wide program, not just focused in specific areas.
I also appreciate the update, Ms. Holton. It's great, three years in a row, to see the progress we're making, and we're hitting the targets we want to hit. And I'm excited to see by March 1st, the applications that come in for the grant program, and see, I always like to know what's going on in the municipalities. And it's great to have a presentation where we see the results and the finished project. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Bowman. You appear unaccompanied by any mascots today. Is that possible?
No, I didn't bring a mascot, but Mr. Lawrence told me not to.
Because he's taller than him, right?
He's got this thing with money. I don't know what it is. Well, well, thank you for having us today. We're really excited to be here. And it's great to hear Jody talk about the bikes, the trails, James John Audubon. Ed Harris and I were out there the other day. It is amazing. It's being constructed out there. And Ed is going to talk about birds today, believe it or not, and we're excited about birds. So, it's funny, I got a, I got a little emotional when I walked in here today because I looked at those steps out there, and I thought about the Eagles' fight song last year at this time. We were all out there in the cold weather singing that song, but we're back in action. And again, it's great to be here. So I'm going to pass it off to the team. We're going to give a quick update on our strategic plan and many other things, but just to remind everyone, tourism in Montgomery County has an economic impact of $1.6 billion a year. And it's only going up. It's amazing what's happening. And when we talk about the trails and the bikes, and Legoland, and the Valley Forge National Park, which is still open right now, the Valley Forge National Park, so please get out there. It aligns perfectly. I know Commissioner Gale, you always like to talk about jobs, jobs, jobs. Over 20,000 jobs are associated to tourism in Montgomery County right now. So again, you're going to hear from the team. I'm going to come back up afterwards. I'm gonna come back up afterwards for questions, but we're really excited to be here. It's a good day for Montgomery County. Jake Marcus.
Mr. Bowman, before you step away, the park's open because of volunteers?
The park is open because of volunteers. The encampment store has received some donations and we're keeping the visitor center open. So it's a collaboration of all three together. I was out there yesterday. We posted a video on Facebook. It was a little windy in front of the huts, but the park is open. If the weather's bad and the roads have to be plowed because of ice, it may shut down over the weekend, but we are doing everything in our power, Commissioner, to keep that park open and we will be open through President's Day weekend, guaranteed.
Thanks, Mike.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity and Happy New Year. I'm gonna take a few moments to speak about a couple of items. One is our three-year strategic plan and the other item is quite the accomplishment for the organization. It's a recent accreditation that we've received. So with that said, like I said, I'm excited to announce that we have embarked on a three-year strategic plan. This process started this past summer with the organization vetting a handful of businesses that specialize in this sort of thing. And we have decided, we picked what we feel is the best out there. It's an organization called Next Factor. They've done over 300 of strategic plans for destinations. They've done them all throughout the country and throughout the world. As you can see on these particular slide, locally, they've worked with Pittsburgh, which is Visit Pittsburgh, and also Destination Lancaster County. And in front of you, I gave you a small handout in your packet to illustrate the process. That said, they've also worked with Canada and throughout the world. So the process essentially, like I said, started back this summer with us vetting the organization and we chose Next Factor. We've recently sent out about 700 emails to stakeholders, some of which are in this room, hoteliers, partners of ours, community leaders. In response, we received over 100, close to 20% return. I am happy to say that the destination received extremely high marks across the board. In fact, we exceeded the industry average on every question, every category that was polled. January 10th, the facilitator was onsite to meet with our management team and then going forward, the facilitator will be back onsite the 14th of February to meet with our Board of Directors to discuss the findings. Obviously, the findings will then dictate our goals, our objectives to keep the organization accountable moving forward with the three-year plan. That said, one of the outcomes of this, of our onsite retreat that we had was we have revamped our mission statement and our vision statement. And I think these two speak very, really dialed into what Montgomery County is all about. Mission statement, I'll read it and again, this is in front of you. Inspiring the world to fall in love with Montgomery County. And then my favorite is our vision statement. Must experience destination rooted in the past and leading the future. I mean, what is there more to say? I mean, obviously, our history is such a huge foundation and then listening to the MONCO Ford, you know, we have to reinvent ourselves, we have to be very innovative. So I can say this took 15 minutes to come up with our team. It was quite something considering that you can go on for hours with these sort of, and less is more when it comes to vision and mission statements going forward. So one other item I do want to touch on, and I am very proud to speak to this, is our recent accreditation. So our industry, the destination marketing organization industry, has a parent organization that drives policies and best practices. That's called Destinations International. They have over 600 members, of which only about 200 or so are accredited. In the immediate Philadelphia suburbs, we are the only one. Philadelphia is accredited, Visit Philadelphia is accredited, Pittsburgh, but in the immediate suburbs, we are it. It touched on all aspects of the organization, from governments to fiscal responsibility, all the way down to basically innovative items that we do. For instance, like our Rev Run. Our Revolutionary Run is very unique in that, you know, we have this great partnership with the park and money raised goes back to the park. In fact, the Rev Run is the only such run that takes place entirely in a national park. There's some that run through a park but not entirely in. So again, this was, this touched on all aspects of the company. The entire team was involved with this, so this is an accreditation I'm very proud of. So with that said, I'm gonna turn it over to Mark Kemeneski, who's gonna speak about our sales update. And Mark, if you would.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to just fill you in on some of our sales, where we're going, as well as utilizing our bid fund, our economic bid fund, to bring in new business to Montgomery County, as well as where we are with the life sciences market. What I can tell you is, over the past four years, you'll see strong gains in room night bookings in Montgomery County, up from fiscal year 2015 at about 97,500 room nights, up to this year in 2018, over 132,000 room nights booked in Montgomery County. So this is a makeup of all different types of business, from our Valley Forge sports brand to our revolutionary events brand, which is meetings, conventions, reunions, as well as our MONCO weddings brand. We are thrilled to see that growth in that sports segment. You'll see 42% of our business is related to sports. That continues to grow. The corporate market continues to grow as well with the health sciences sector, and we'll talk about life sciences in a little bit, as well as what we're seeing with our meetings and associations here in Montgomery County. We're also proud to talk about some of the upcoming conferences that are taking place in Montgomery County will be highlighted. For instance, the Pennsylvania Sheriff's Association, their upcoming 2020 conference has been awarded to Montgomery County and will be taking place at the Valley Forge Casino Resort. So that's an opportunity for us to showcase Montgomery County and all that it has to offer. As I mentioned, sports continues to be a driver for us. We're very proud that we were able to utilize our economic bid fund to bring in a brand-new basketball tournament that will be happening over July 4th weekend. This will generate over 4,000 hotel rooms and an economic impact of $3.3 million. This is a piece of business that was formerly at Atlantic City, at Boardwalk Hall. So we are thrilled to have it here. They are excited to have it with all of the amenities that we have in addition to the hotel community, the King of Prussia Mall, the Philadelphia Premium Outlets, Valley Forge National Historical Park. That really makes it a wonderful opportunity for them. And it also helps our hotels in a time period when they do need that help and July 4th weekend is one of those times. Another utilization of the economic bid fund is the return of the Symmetra Tour and that's the Valley Forge Invitational. We will be hosting them again May 28th through June 2nd at Ravensclaw Golf Course. Very exciting to bring them back. I know Commissioner Gale, you were at the Czech presentation just a couple of months ago. It was a great event that brought in young women from over 33 countries. So that was something that we really were blown away when we saw that in 2018 is the international impact. And Colleen Selner, who's our International Tourism Sales Manager, will talk a little bit more about international, but that's something that it's a common theme. We see it not only in sports, but we also see it with our life sciences brand. And Pennsylvania Bio Conference will be taking place down in Philadelphia in June of 2019. Over 60 countries will be represented there. Back in 2018, both Scott Higgins and Mike Bowman attended the show up in Boston. And, you know, when we look at the companies that are on that screen, who's here in our own backyard in Montgomery County? Life Sciences has the opportunity to be a great gainer for us. We look forward to pushing out the message of why Montgomery County is a great destination to live, work, and play. With that being said, I'd love to turn it over to Colleen Selner, who is our International Sales Manager, to talk a little bit about international business, specifically what's happening in China right now.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. Like Mark had said, my name is Colleen Selner. I am the International Tourism Sales Manager with Valley Forge. So my mission with the international market is to bring Montgomery County in front of an international audience. This has made possible due to our partnerships with Chester County and the Philadelphia Convention and Visitors Bureau. So why Montgomery County? International travelers love to shop, first of all, and we have a lot of great tax-free shopping options in Montgomery County. And our Simon properties are already taking notice of this. Both of our Simon properties, King of Prussia Mall and the Philadelphia Premium Outlets, are both beginning to accept Union Pay, which is the number one payment system for Chinese customers. And most of the retailers are beginning to accept that, which makes it a lot easier for them to come and shop in our shopping destinations. We have over 50 golf courses and we have over 75 hotels that are usually offered at a better value than they'll find downtown, so we like to bring some of those visitors out here to stay in our hotels. This past October, I had the opportunity to spend time in China. I was in China for two weeks, meeting face-to-face with a lot of the Chinese tour operators that are bringing business to Montgomery County. It was a really good opportunity to be face-to-face with those operators. It was a brand-new initiative for our organization. We've never taken the trip before. The trip does occur every year, so we were really blessed that we were able to go this year. And we've really got a lot of good information out of the trip, like how the Chinese customers are spending their money here, what they're looking for, and how we can make it easier for them to come here and enjoy their time in Montgomery County. We have a few trips planned for this year already. These are just to name a few of them. This year, we already have trips planned to the UK, Germany, China again, and will be headed to India and Denmark, which are also two new trips for this organization as well. We have a lot of different ways that we choose where we go. We go into a lot of reporting that kind of lets us know who's coming to the area and their country of origin and how much they're spending. This Visa View, the Visa View Report allows us to track the spending and it lets us know that our top countries that are coming here are the UK, India, Germany, and China. So it lets us also be aggressive with our collateral. So if you'll see in your packet, we offer this piece of collateral in five different languages. So it lets us speak directly to our clients, get them to see the picture just a little bit better. We also work incredibly close with the Philadelphia International Airport. The Philadelphia International Airport has 43 international departures a day and about 1,600 a year. So what we do is we target those places that Philadelphia has direct flights. We get to know the tour operators that are there and we bring them into Montgomery County so they can see what we have to offer. So when they're selling to their clients, it allows them to take that direct flight into Philadelphia, but then come out to the countryside, specifically Montgomery County, stay the night, shop in our malls, and go out to our different historical attractions. Lastly, I'm just gonna show a quick video and it has some loud music, just in case it's a little loud. This is a video that I show when I travel. It kind of gives a quick glimpse, this is a shorter version, but it gives a quick glimpse of everything that we have to offer here. And this one is in language. This one's in Chinese. All right, thank you. That was just a quick little international update and now I will bring up Ed to talk about some of our marketing initiatives for the year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thanks again for having our Tourism Board here with you this morning. I'm gonna jump right in and give a quick update on marketing and communications, as Mike touched on a few minutes ago. It was just about this time last year on a day where I think it actually was a few degrees colder where we were across the street, singing the Eagles Flight Song. And the reason I bring up this picture is because that...
I have to bring it up, right?
I'm sorry. That is the past, but there is a reason. I have it up there. Our hotel community actually benefited during that run for the Eagles last year where the hotel occupancy was fantastic in the months of January and even into that first February weekend. And we realized the benefit of that at some of our hotels here, too. So that is not here, unfortunately, this year. But what is here this year, which I'm excited to talk about, is our MONCO winter package. We've worked with 22 businesses and attractions across the county to develop an awesome package where if you spend the night in one of our hotels in this first quarter, you're gonna receive a coupon booklet worth $250 worth of offers to great attractions, restaurants, et cetera. And by the way, the Philly winter package is valued at $218. So I'm very happy to say that our team worked very well with the business community to develop this package and also to make sure people know about this package. We're on TV for the first time in Q1 as an organization, highlighting this package, telling people you don't have to go too far to get away and spend the night in one of our 75 hotels and experience our great history, our shopping. Even our breweries are gonna be highlighted in this campaign and fun things to do at some of our indoor attractions. So take a look. And when we were walking in today, Corey mentioned, I think you saw this one this morning on Fox. So this is not only gonna be airing here in the Philadelphia region, but through our research, we found that in travel, families specifically are willing to travel a little bit further during the spring and summer months, but in the wintertime, they don't make as many trips far away from home. And so we're really targeting the Philadelphia DMA as well as the Harrisburg, Lancaster, York, Lebanon, Lehigh Valley area with this campaign. And it's not just TV. If you follow us on social media, or if you don't follow us yet, please do at Visit Valley Forge, you'll see this campaign come to life, as well as billboards throughout the campaign. And when you look at the map, you can see there the geography. It's more of a staycation message, but so far, it's working. We are hearing from our hotels, they're calling us, saying, send us more coupon books. So that's a very exciting initiative for us. We're also launching some new collateral right now. We have a brand-new dining guide. Our dining magazine, for those of you who aren't familiar with it, is called Crave MONCO. It celebrates the, here we have one here, maybe we can pass it around, over 1,700 restaurants right here in Montgomery County. Our annual visitors guide just came out. And we'll be distributing these not only to our hotels, but lots of other places throughout the region, as well as community centers, libraries, et cetera. One of the other exciting things you can get at the park right now is our second comic book to make history fun for kids, hopefully get them off the screens and just make it a better visitor experience when you travel here. Someone earlier touched on our billboards and our Embark MONCO campaign. That's all about our pet-friendly hotels. And as a suburban destination, we have to continue to look for these niches of groups who will come here and not only stay in our hotels, but go to our restaurants, visit our attractions, et cetera. And what better event to launch our Embark MONCO campaign than the National Dog Show that we had here this past year? That's been a great success story so far and we're gonna continue to think of innovative ways to keep Embark MONCO going. We've talked in previous meetings about MONCO Makers. That's a celebration of the great breweries, wineries, and distilleries throughout Montgomery County. What makes us unique compared to our regional competitors is we have an app that you can download. It's called MONCO Makers and when you check in to our various locations, you can receive branded prizes from us. Have to talk about social media if you talk about marketing in the year 2019 because it really is the battlefield when you're competing against other destinations. And I'm happy to say that our team has really raised the bar over the past year. We exceeded the 100,000 mark in terms of people following our daily Facebook feed, 67% increase in Instagram, which is photography-based, and video. We're gonna continue, you've seen a few videos today that we've produced. Video is so important in marketing and we're gonna continue to post those videos on YouTube where we've had a huge increase. And then, of course, everybody knows about Twitter, where we continue to tweet out key messages. Couple other really quick updates on the technology front. We're reinvesting to make sure we're the most innovative tourism board in the region. One way we're doing that is through a company called AudioEye. And we will be the first website in the Northeast that is ADA compliant for the visually impaired. We're working with this company right now so that when you visit our website, you can click on a small icon and have the pages on the website adjusted, whether it's fonts, colors, et cetera. So that's something very exciting we're gonna be introducing to the media here in the next few months as we wrap that project up. ActOn is another technology company we're working with, which enables us to send a targeted email to folks after they came to our website. It's kind of scary how you can be tracked online these days, but ActOn is gonna allow It's kind of scary how you can be tracked online these days, but Acton is going to allow us to seize more opportunities. And then Adara is something we're excited about. Adara is a software that allows you to track all of your online marketing. So if we put ads on various sites on the internet, we can get reports back, tracking where those visitors are going to, all the way up to booking a hotel room. So lots of exciting news on the technology front. And just a few other things before I hand it over to Jessica to wrap up our presentation. The Philadelphia Orchestra is coming to Montgomery County in March. We're bringing back our Monco's Best Pizza Tournament in March, which is a 64-team tournament of all the amazing pizza shops across Montgomery County, where you can vote on our website. April brings back the Rev Run. We'll be launching Monco.T, Monco.TV, excuse me, which will be a website solely dedicated to the videos we've been producing. Our Valley Forge Invitational is also back this year, as Mark talked about earlier. We're also working with a company right now who's doing an audit of our marketing to make sure that we're LGBTQ friendly and that our marketing going forward will broaden our audience. A few people have mentioned the John James Audubon Center at Mill Grove. It is going to be incredible. I've been converted into a birder, like Mike. I didn't realize this. We did some research. Birding is a $40 billion global industry. It's a niche audience, but people from all over the world, I'm learning a lot about this, are birders. And on Earth Day, our marketing team is going to get a, a hard hat tour update, do some projects on the grounds, and, and start to leak the new center out to the media, which is very exciting. The Arts Monco Guide will be coming out soon here in spring. And Travel Matters, what is that? That is the theme for the National Travel and Tourism Week this year. It happens every May. It coincides with a golf outing that we have each year, where we celebrate the 53 golf courses in the community. And so I know I went pretty fast, but we still have a couple of quick updates from our Director of Government and Cultural Affairs, Jessica Willingham.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thanks so much, Ed. And it's always nice to be back before the Commissioners. So I'm very excited that we are kicking off 2019 with the announcement of an Arts Monco Advisory Committee. So this is similar to other committees we have to market our brands across our whole portfolio when we market Monco. We're going to meet quarterly, and I'm really proud, because these are truly heavy hitters across the county and across the region, and all of the cultural sectors that we represent here in Monco. So you'll notice some familiar faces, like Erin Riley, the Artistic Director of Theater Horizon right here in Norristown, and Michael Norris, who's the Chief Strategy Officer at the Greater Philadelphia Cultural Alliance. They work with the Philadelphia region as a whole. So Philly and all of the surrounding counties, we're really proud that he accepted to be on our advisory committee. And then Judith Herbst, the GM of the Keswick Theater, who is going to be hosting the Philadelphia Orchestra for the first time ever on March 21st. So we're very excited that's coming up. There are some bios of the committee members for you in your packets. So Spring is also going to bring the Philadelphia Flower Show. I know we always see Commissioner Arkush there. We always debut our arts guide for the spring and summer there, because about 250,000 people attend the Flower Show. They are always arts fans themselves, and Monco is always really well represented. There have actually been some past winners for Best in Show. Places like Robertson's Flowers and Hunter Hayes, right here in Monco, are prominently on display. And as has been mentioned many times, the Keswick Theater is hosting the Philadelphia Orchestra for the first time ever, and it's the Keswick's 90th year. So that's a very, very exciting thing that is going to be highlighted. What we're actually most proud of with this is that it's going to be giving back to the community. So we're working with the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit. They work with all of the schools across the county, including our 22 public school districts. And the programming, the proceeds from this is going to be able to go back to middle school arts education in Montgomery County. We're working with MCIU to identify the schools, and then Musicopia, which is a nonprofit that provides musical instrument donations, and also programming in schools, is going to be able to go into four schools in Montgomery County in the 1920 school year and provide actual programming. So these are our future arts enthusiasts, and we think it's important not only to, to bring the arts here for our patrons, but for the folks who are going to be future supporters of the arts across the county. And then the summer is always an exciting time. You may remember Cirque du Soleil being here on the fairgrounds outside of the Greater Philadelphia Expo Center at Oaks. We'll have another Big Apple Circus that's coming, and they perform nationally. They always open at Lincoln Center in New York City. They'll be in Washington DC. This has animals, which is a little bit different and exciting. And then, I know Mike told me I can't really say anymore about this other very mysterious picture, but it might be an organization you're familiar with and something I'm sure when we're able to announce will be extremely exciting and, you know, more in the press. So more to come there. And just in summary, as you know, we're always thinking strategically as an organization and really using that to take our marketing of Montgomery County to the next level. So we're very appreciative of your time today, and please let us know if you have any questions. We'll be happy to answer them. Great.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, everyone. Lot going on. Time is the essence. We could have kept going and going and going. In your packet also, there's a packet in the back, which is a roll-up from my commitment to the Commissioners and to the county from Act 18, which was the tax we'd asked for the increase from 2% to 4%, and where we were going to spend that money to increase tourism and economic impact to the county. So we're happy to say all four categories are spot-on. We're in a very good place. Ed alluded to, and it's not excused, last year at this time, man, things were good with the Eagles. I joke about it, but it was amazing the economic impact the Super Bowl does have on the region. And Philly doesn't have the DNC, the Pope, the various big events that they had, the NFL Draft. So we're trying to replace all those events, which I feel confident with, with new events, do fresh things to fill the hotels, to fill our parks, and certainly have people eat. Any questions?
Well, Mike, thank you, and everyone, thank you so much. That was really a fantastic presentation. It's so exciting to see all this work come together and how well you've integrated it across the county. You know, one of my favorite things is all the different brands that you've developed and how you've been able to market things that I think aren't normally marketed, so people don't even really think about them, and, and put all kinds of different locations or attach to one or two of these different brands. So it really does give people an accessibility point. No matter how they're coming in at this, they can get access to a lot of different things. So really exciting stuff. I love the new vision statement and mission statement. Those are really terrific. And it's great to see numbers like this. You know, this is absolutely a part of our economic success story. A lot of jobs, a lot of revenue into the county, so, you know, kudos, kudos to all of you. You know, it's particularly great that so much of this work actually ends, does end up benefiting smaller businesses, smaller hotels maybe that are owned by individual families. It's not always just the big kind of corporate winners here, but we have a lot of hometown winners in this work, and that's really the best thing. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, I'm disappointed.
Here we go.
Brand placement, I bring the water bottle. And you lie and say that I did not want Monty here. Let Monty know that he is welcome here whenever he wants.
I never lie, Commissioner.
And Monty is not taller.
I've got photos.
It was the giraffe. But seriously, I want to thank you and your team for what you're doing at Valley Forge Park right now. You do it all year round, but particularly right now with the federal shutdown, all the efforts to make sure that people in this area are still able to enjoy the park, truly commendable. So, thank you.
I'm very excited for 2019. I know the Philadelphia Orchestra will be huge. You and I talked about that. I'm very excited to see the impact that'll have here in Montgomery County. The Bio Conference, excited to see that as well. That new basketball tournament. And I learned something new about the currency between China and our retail markets here, and what that'll bring to Montgomery County. So a lot of good things to look forward to, and I wish you a successful 2019.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Happy to hear you, everyone. Thanks again. See you in a few months.
Okay. Take care. All right. Before we move on to resolutions, I want to welcome our Sheriff, Sean Kilkeny, to the room. Thank you for joining us. All right. Ms. Hertz, follow that. Good luck.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have two items for your consideration this morning. The first is a resolution to approve amendments to the 2017 Annual Action Plan. This is to increase funding to the YWCA Tri-County in Pottstown through our Community Development Black Grant Program. In 2017, the YWCA received an allocation of $142,000 in community development black grant funds that was proposed to improve accessibility to their facility, constructing an entry ramp, renovating existing rooms, widening doorways, things like that. In 2000, September of 2018, they received bids for the various construction trades that were involved, amounting to nearly $500,000. So they conducted a value engineering analysis, which resulted in a cost reduction to $325,000. However, that still exceeded the project budget by about $157,000. So they were able to come up with additional match funding, but still had a gap of $133,850. Our CDBG program had contingency funds available in that amount through unspent funds from other projects. And so this is an amendment to increase their project budget by $133,850, so that they can complete this project and get the benefit of that value engineering. Because this is considered a substantial amendment to the project, we were required by our federal partners to undergo a public comment period. So you approved an initial amendment to, I'm sorry, an initial resolution to approve that amendment for public comment in December. That public comment period was open for 30 days from December 14th to January 14th. There is no public comment received, and so today is the day to approve the final resolution to approve that amendment.
Thank you. Is there a motion that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to execute the approved changes to the 2017 Annual Action Plan as outlined in this resolution and explained by Ms. Emma Hertz?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gale. Any board comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you. My second resolution for you is to amend the 2018 Annual Action Plan to increase the Community Development Black Grant Contract to Keystone Opportunity Center from $22,500 to $30,000. Regarding this project, Keystone was awarded $22,500 in our program near 2018 for case management funding tied to their emergency shelter for homeless individuals. That shelter has been closed due to habitability issues. However, the agency does provide other case management services for homeless folks not connected to that shelter. And so we are essentially moving this funding over to support that work and also increasing that funding by $7,500 in CDBG funding to just flesh out that program a little bit. Again, the increase is coming from our contingency funding from the CDBG program. This amendment is not considered a substantial amendment and therefore does not require any public comment. So today's resolution is to approve the amendment to the 2018 Annual Action Plan.
Thank you. Is there a motion that approval is hereby given to amend Montgomery County's consolidated Annual Action Plan for the 2018 Community Development Black Grant Program related to Keystone Opportunity Center, to permit it to provide case management and/or other essential services to homeless households? This amendment includes an increase of funds of $7,500 to a total allocation of $30,000.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gale. Any board comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. All right. Ms. Holton, welcome back.
All right. Hello again. You have six community planning assistance contracts for your approval. We have five of those contracts are our municipalities' planning assistance contracts, whereby the planning commission staff provides technical assistance to our municipality. Over a three-year contract term, the cost is shared 50/50 with the municipality. I'll go through each one of them. Pottstown Borough, for the total cost of $87,318, we'll be working on zoning ordinance updates, a comprehensive look at their subdivision and land development ordinance, as well as general services. Rockledge Borough, for a total cost of $62,370, we will be working with them on a master plan for the Jarrett Avenue Park, as well as grants to implement that master plan. We'll be providing economic development assistance. Springfield Township, for a total cost of $74,844, we're working on subdivision and land development and zoning ordinance updates, as well as general services. In particular, they're interested in greening and sustainable actions in their saldo, in their subdivision and land development ordinance. In Upper Salford Township, for a total cost of $58,212, we will provide general services and begin a comprehensive plan. And the Indian Valley Regional Planning Commission, for a total cost of $93,555, we'll be working on continuing and completing the multi-regional greenway and stewardship study that includes that region as well as three others. We'll be working on implementation agreement updates with the, all the municipalities involved in that regional planning commission, and planning and zoning assistance. So those five contracts are three-year terms, and like I said, the cost is shared 50/50. They all begin on January 1, 2019. And the one short-term contract that we have is with Pottstown Borough. That's a one-year contract from January 1st to December 31st, 2019. We'll be working on Kime Street Gateway Overlay Plan. This plan is partially funded by a grant from Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission to look at zoning and streetscape improvements at In Kime Street, which is a gateway to the industrial area of Pottstown, as well as the riverfront and the Schuylkill River Trail. The total cost of that is $41,713. This one is split 75/25 with the municipality. 75% is the municipality's funds, and 25% is the county services. $31,284.75 from the municipality, and $10,428.25 from the county. Six contracts in total.
Thank you. Is there a motion that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to approve the contracts for municipal planning assistance with Pottstown and Rockledge Boroughs, Springfield and Upper Salford Townships, and the Indian Valley Regional Planning Commission as outlined in this resolution and as described by Ms. Holton?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Gale.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Farmland preservation.
Okay. You have a farmland funding commitment resolution to certify the 2019 county funds for the farmland preservation program. This assures the state that we have set these funds aside, and as documented in our capital budget, for the use of the farmland preservation program. The total amount that we will use to match state funds is $1,262,488. That is $1 million from county revenues. It also includes $262,488 from the county clean and green interest that's collected on rollbacks for properties that are receiving a tax benefit from being conserved or designated as open space and have chosen to develop the property after, before the exhaustion of that, of that benefit. So we receive the rollback tax penalties and collect interest on them. That interest goes towards the easement purchases. Of that, we will take $2,000 and allocate that to the Conservation District for their use to help us with inspections of the farms that we own.
Is there a motion that the Montgomery County Commissioners hereby authorize the sum of $1,262,488 for farmland preservation use during the year 2019, to be placed in a restricted account for such purposes? And that $2,000 of such funds be allocated to the Montgomery County Conservation District to assist with the statutory required annual inspections of each preserved farm, with the remainder of the funds to be used for the purchase of agricultural preservation easements?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Gale.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. All right. carries. Thank you. All right, Mr. Zellers.
Morning Commissioners. Happy New Year to everybody. So, gonna have two things for you today, and it's actually dovetails very nicely off of Jody's presentation earlier. Since these are things that will contribute to our vibrant economy here in Montgomery County. The first is a, for your approval, a proposal from the Borough of Bridgeport. And we have representatives here from the Borough today who can speak as well if you'd like, for ALERTA. Just as a refresher, we did, I think, one or two of these last year, but we're on a new year, so we'll take a moment. ALERTA, or Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance, is something that is allowable at the municipal level with the agreement of the taxing bodies through an act of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And is an economic development tool. And again, the idea here is we will use this, or in this case, Bridgeport will use this, to encourage new investment. And what's important with ALERTA to note is that this, this assistance is only eligible for qualifying new construction and improvements. You can't put up new curtains and get alerted. You've got to do something significant that triggers a reassessment of your property. And it is a very flexible tool, I would note. There's a maximum term that ALERTA can go out, but as you'll see here, Bridgeport has chosen to use this in a way that best suits their needs and their goals for their future economic development. And as I noted, I will note again, this requires the approval of all three taxing bodies. Both the Borough and the School District have already approved this. For Bridgeport's ALERTA, this will be a zone similar to what we saw last year, I believe with Lower Moreland, as you recall. And with the flexibility of the tool, they've chosen specifically to focus on those areas in bold in their zoning plan. The area will be, as noted, and if you take a moment, imagine Bridgeport across the river, that core area along those main arterial routes through the community where we already have a commercial district, some residential, and some industrial as well. Bridgeport being one of our older boroughs is fortunate to have industrial in their central business area, which of course generates jobs and a great amount of economic activity. This is just a map to show you. The highlighted area are those parcels that have been identified as eligible for this opportunity in future. And so the abatement schedule in this case will be a five-year schedule. The abatement will phase over those five years 20% per year, so that in the sixth year, the property is then paying the full amount of taxes again. You'll also see, and I apologize for the small font on there, but over time, based on estimates of new investment in this area, what the changes in taxes collected by the taxing bodies will be, based on current millage rates. And lastly, and I highlighted a few of these things already, but certainly for this community, they are looking to really charge up their downtown development opportunities. It's one of our core communities. Obviously, in the area of the county where we're seeing a lot of development pressure already, coming upriver from Concha Hockin and coming across from Upper Marion Township. And as well, this is a, this is a job creation tool for the community. They have, they have a good core. This will give it a little bit more. I would also note they are going to be working with the Planning Commission and myself on some more economic development and overall comprehensive planning. So this is just another step in their continued revitalization. And as one of our core communities in a borough, they will be able to use this along with their other planning efforts and initiatives, including a Monica 2040 grant, which they received last year, to build that Main Street walkable, desirable community that we know folks of all ages and really the talented workforce that we need to retain and bring here find desirable. So that's all I have. Of course, as I said, there are representatives here from the Borough if you'd like to hear from them as well.
Yeah, that'd be great.
You guys want to come up?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for allowing us this opportunity today. I would just like to begin by, oh, all right, thank you, begin by introducing myself. My name's Keith Truman. I'm the Borough Manager of Bridgeport. With me is Kyle Schenk, Borough Council President. Again, much appreciated. And I'd like to thank the assistance provided by not only Upper Marion School District, but by Mr. Stein, Mr. Saltisziak, and Mr. Zellers for their help and insight throughout this process. If there are any questions, I'm more than willing to field those. Thank you.
Okay, great. Mr. Schenk, do you have any comments you'd like to offer?
No, just generally Commissioners, thank you for taking this up and looking at this. I know as we progress, you can look right out your window and see what we're doing across the river in Bridgeport. So we really appreciate the collaboration and appreciate your hearing this and look forward to working with you further. Thanks.
All right. Is there a motion that pursuant to the applicable provisions of the Pennsylvania Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance Act, those properties in Bridgeport boroughs specified on the list attached to this resolution as Exhibit A are hereby eligible to receive exemption from real estate taxes due and payable to the County of Montgomery in accordance with the five-year schedule detailed in this resolution?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Lawrence?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gale. Just one small point of clarification, Mr. Zellers, because I know sometimes this gets lost in translation. These properties will not stop paying taxes.
Correct. This is only on those, the abatement is only on those new improvements that qualify, like I said, so it's not something that doesn't trigger a reassessment. But if somebody, let's say, a substantial reskinning of the building, addition of new square footage would trigger the reassessment. So they continue to pay the taxes they had paid here before, and then that new segment of taxes, we'll call it, would be phased in over the five-year schedule that Bridgeport is proposing to use here.
Okay, great. And just out of curiosity, the school board and the Borough both passed this. Was it, were they unanimous votes? Were they, any, any issues that came up?
Both were unanimous votes. Bridgeport passed it at their December 18th, 2018 meeting, and just recently at, I believe, the January 4th meeting of Upper Marion School District. Both were unanimous, yes.
Okay, great. Any public comment? All right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Zellers.
We'll look forward to seeing what happens. Thank you.
Okay, next one up. So we move from ALERTA to a TIF. The Commerce Department is nothing but not just an alphabet soup of fun and excitement today. This is, again, something a little bit different. I don't know the last time one of these has been brought before the Board, so I will take a little time first to talk about it in general. What is a TIF, or Tax Increment Financing? And again, this is something that's allowable by state statute. And it's going to sound a little bit like ALERTA, but it is different, and we should understand those differences. So the idea here is, in a very general way, we have a, we have a property, a project, that's going to make improvements to that property. And for example, let's just say, we're going to, we bought a beautiful greenfield, and we're going to put new infrastructure in. It's going to have public amenities to it. It's going to have all manner of things. But it is a taxable property. And so what will happen is, over a period of up to 20 years, that increment, the former taxes, then there's the increase to the new taxes, that increment, the difference between those two, a percentage of that increment is allowed to be used to be remitted to, in this case, it'll be to support the financing of the project. But that's generally the idea. You can see there, there's a variety of different uses. And this, again, this is a municipal-driven process. So the municipality has to identify where it's going to take place, what's allowable, how it will take place as well. And I want to thank Jody. The Planning Commission was very helpful in putting this together here, to provide this overview. So again, it's different. This is, if you think about ALERTA for a second, which was just approved, more general. This is more specific now what we're talking about. This is driven by this project wholly. So there's a process for this as well, what took place here. A committee is put together of the taxing bodies and our County Redevelopment Authority. Jerry Nugent's here today from the Redevelopment Authority, as long as their, as well as their solicitor. And I should note, there are representatives from the other taxing bodies here that can speak to this, should you like, as well. The committee works together for this process and this committee, myself, Jody, and our solicitor were part of it, and examines the project. It examines what's being proposed here and how this is going to be structured, how it's going to be funded, to make sure that it passes critical tests along, what they call a "but-for" test, essentially. If this fight, if this support, if this TIF was not present, could this project still proceed? What would happen if not? Specific now to what we're talking about today, this TIF is being proposed for the redevelopment of the Elkins Estate in Shelton Township. It is currently a tax-exempt property that has been, been as such for many decades. The grounds are, they come from a different time. The Gilded Age in America, very beautiful grounds, if you've been there. The buildings are quite historic, and really, it's a very unique part of our county's history. So what has happened over the course of really more than a decade, again, driven at the municipal level, has been starting to look at through very, the comprehensive planning and zoning actions and other things. What are we going to do as part of our redevelopment of our township to bring this property into new use, to return it to taxpaying status, knowing that the current owners were essentially going to be vacating it at some point? And where it has led to, through some feasibility studies as well, is the opportunity that is presented today, which is the redevelopment and refurbishment of the property and grounds, such that it would become a hotel and conference center. The grounds would have public amenities included for use by, I note, the township and the school district themselves, performing art center, culinary kitchen. Obviously, you can imagine too, you know, just overall beautification of the area, improvement for a healthier community, people able to walk through there, enjoy the amenities of the hotel and conference center itself. And so as I said, we, this process began, the TIF committee began meeting back in October. There was a lot of back and forth, as you can imagine, between the different solicitors involved and other individuals. Thus far, again, this is a little bit different than ALERTA, so where we're at in the process, two days ago, the school district agreed to participate in the plan. It does require the approval of all three taxing bodies to move forward. And so today, the county's being asked to agree to participate. Obviously, with ALERTA, we're usually the last ones to vote. In this case, we're second to last. Depending on the outcome of the county's vote today, the township would then take further steps to move forward with its approval, and then our Redevelopment Authority as well. So the plan itself, and this is a bit atypical of a TIF, in this case, it is being, the increment over time will be used to pay for private financing secured to move this project forward. And it is over, again, 20-year, maximum of a 20-year period, or approximately $8.4 million, whichever comes first. There are allowable costs, which include the acquisition of the property, professional services related to this redevelopment, and those improvements to these, these public areas that are part of the redevelopment plan for this, for the site. Also, so the remittance structure, in brief, in the first three years of the plan, all taxes paid will be remitted as the increment. In years four through 10, the taxing bodies will retain $100,000 of those property taxes paid, and those, they will then be split amongst the taxing bodies proportionally based on millage rates at that time. In the remaining 10 years, maximum of 10 years, years 11 through 20, the property, the taxing bodies will retain a percentage of the taxes paid in those years, is based on a formula and a series of brackets. But at no time will the taxing bodies retain less than $100,000 of the taxes paid. And part of the challenge here in this, and I'll note, because this redevelopment process will take place over multiple years, particularly in the first three years, when the hotel conference center is not operational yet, that assessed amount will change. As we were noting a moment ago during the ALERTA discussion, different actions will happen. Certain buildings will be ready to be occupied, others may not yet. So this will be a continuation, which makes this a little bit unique in the TIF structure. I would also note that there are additional elevators in the percentages of the taxes retained by the taxing bodies in years 12, 16, and 20 of this plan. And ultimately, the goals of the plan and the redevelopment process is first and foremost to give this property the redevelopment it needs, that it's consistent with what the township wants to see. Again, as I said, they've engaged in a process that has been more than a decade in looking at this particular issue in their community. It will generate new investment. And I know for the folks who are here from the township today, I know it is very desirous to them to show that they are open for business, and that this will hopefully spur further economic development in their community. It will create jobs over time. The estimates right now are about 120 permanent jobs with the opening of the hotel conference center. And also, in developing this plan, the key word I would use here is equitable. To find a way that made sure that over the full 20-year period, there was an equitable increment relative to the needs to redevelop this property, but also to ensure that the taxing bodies were treated equitably and fairly as the business becomes a flourishing business. And again, kind of good we had our friends from Valley Forge Tourism and Convention Board here today, because this is another asset in their toolkit when it's open, to help market the county and bring more business here as well. So there'll be a lot of opportunities that will come from that. Again, as I said, there are representatives here from both the township and the school board, and they can come up.
Please do.
Good morning. I'm Brad Pransky, Commissioner in Sheltonham Township. I want to thank you for taking the time to listen to us all, all of us today. We're very excited about the Elkins Estate project. This is, it, when it first came to us, we had rewritten, as you know, our zoning code recently. And we had put a lot of things in these mixed-use zones, in the hopes of bringing in different kinds of commercial development and encouraging different kinds of things. Because Sheltonham, as you know, is very much a bedroom community, and we have less than a 2% commercial tax base, something that we needed to increase drastically. And when the developer came to us, they basically were doing everything that was in the zoning. We were amazed. The boutique hotel and the other amenities that they're putting in there are all fit within the code. So we were very excited about seeing this, and weren't terribly surprised when they came to us asking about some sort of help with the taxes, because they are high in our township, and they are, can be burdensome, especially on a new project. So a lot of time has been spent negotiating the aspects of this and working with the developer and the school district. And we're hoping we'll get your support also. The township completely supports the project and is looking forward to it moving forward. It has, it has, by its being there, by the conversation it has started, has brought in a number of other developers who are now asking about other properties in the area. So we're excited to see this happen.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Brian Haver, Township Manager. And again, on behalf of the township, we appreciate the opportunity to present this before you today. I thought I'd just take a minute or two just to go through some of the community benefits. Some were in the, in the presentation already. But if this project's approved, the grounds will be open for the community, for community events twice a year, public grounds, and there will be a walking trail that will be open to the community throughout the entire year. There's going to be lobby space in the Elstow Manor that will be open for public use, such as exhibition of public art. Township residents and students will be able to display that artwork in the public spaces. Guided tours, twice a month, of all the historic buildings, and I believe there's seven, seven buildings. Community gardens will be available for the residents' use and the township's use. There'll be a preservation easement that will be put on the historic buildings, protecting the building's facades. There's going to be a covenant preventing future development on the open space at the rear of the property. There's anticipated increases in local taxes, such as the earned income tax, business privilege tax, and the mercantile tax. And you already heard that there's an anticipated 120 permanent jobs. And again, this is a project that has already spurred conversation, future economic development, with the adjacent parcel known as the former Temple Tyler property, and also across the street, the vacant Lymwood Hall Estate. There's been a lot of conversation now since this project is moving forward. And I just wanted to mention, the township, again, is fully committed to this proposal. We are scheduled to have a public hearing next Wednesday for consideration of this TIF plan and the map, and that's at 7:30 at Curtis Hall in the township. So, thank you very much. And with that, I'll turn it over to David Cohen from the School District.
Good morning.
Good morning Commissioners. I'm David Cohen. I'm a school director of the Sheltonham School District. I want to first thank the county for supporting this project. Mr. Stein, Mr. Saltisziak, Ms. Holton, Mr. Nugent, Ms. Holton, um, Mr. Nugent, and, uh, Mr. Zellers, uh, for their support of this project and helping to see it through. Um, as was noted, the school board to approve this project already submitted a resolution. Without recapping and rehashing the other statements that were made, several elements from my perspective are that there will be a covenant to disallow residential development of the property, which means that we know burden to the school district, which is significant. And also, there will be taxes generated that will be, um, retained by the taxing bodies, whereas right now, being the property is owned by nonprofit and it's taxed exempt, there currently are no taxes being, um, collected or retained by the taxing bodies. And long-term, it will lead to an improvement in the township, and even though the school district's focus is on educating the children in the school district, um, we do have determinist boundaries, and I appreciate, as does the school district, the economic development and growth of the township, which this project will facilitate and lead to. Thank you.
There's one more person, but I, I, I misspoke earlier, and I want to correct myself now for the record. Um, in the years eleven through twenty, there is a possibility that the taxes retained could be below a hundred thousand dollars, depending on the assessed value. I was incorrect in my statement. I apologize for that. You want anything else? I'm sure you don't want to... I don't know. Again, my apologies for that, but...
Okay. Thank you. We'll get a motion on the table and then go from there. Is there a motion that the Montgomery County Commissioners hereby approve the tax increment financing plan presented for the property in Cheltenham Township as more fully described in this resolution, subject to the terms and conditions attached here to? Be it further resolved that the proper county officials, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to take such actions and to execute and deliver such documents as may be necessary or appropriate for the implementation of the TIF plan, consistent with this resolution, including, without limitation, negotiation and execution of a tax increment financing cooperation agreement by and among the township, the school district, the county, and the authority in substantial, in substantially the form presented and explained by Mr. Zellers?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Lawrence?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gale. Um, just a couple of questions. Commissioner Pransky, I know this is in your ward, correct?
That's correct.
And your fellow commissioners have been supportive of this project?
Yes.
Great.
With minimal bloodshed.
Minimal. Wow, that's pretty good. That's great. And I, I think this was implied, but, um, I know, I don't know how many people are, are familiar with this particular property, but there's some absolutely gorgeous buildings on that property, and this will preserve...
That was one of the most outstanding facts of the presentation from the developer. They are stipulating, eh, in their deed, that this will never be developed for housing and that the buildings will be preserved. Uh, the first time I was in the main estate building, uh, the Elstow Manor, was when the sisters were still occupying it, and it's, it's sort of like a Great Gatsby thing. You know, you just walk in and your jaw drops. You go like, oh my goodness. It is, it was just a magnificent, you know, throwback to the Gilded Age. And their assertion that they are there to help preserve this and to make good use of it was just a tremendous benefit to the township.
And could you speak a bit to the developer and the developer's experience in projects of this scope?
Well, that would probably be, be left better to them, but I will tell you what I know of it.
Are they here?
I, I know that their attorney is Amy Farrell.
Great. Would you like to?
Sure.
Yep, great.
I don't want to speak for them.
Yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Could you just please introduce yourself?
Sure. Uh, Amy Farrell, I'm the attorney for Landmark Developers. I'm also, uh, full disclosure, as I've mentioned to you before, a Cheltenham Township resident, so I'm a big proponent of this project for a lot of different reasons. Um, Landmark, I think you will hear, and as you've heard in some of our prior presentations, is uniquely situated for this type of a project. They are, um, a development company out of Jersey City. They specialize in historic redevelopments and in taking old buildings and converting them to hotel, conference, and restaurant facilities. They've done this throughout New Jersey and New York. Uh, they are now moving into the Philadelphia region. They, uh, own two properties in New Hope now, uh, that are both up and running, uh, and this will be their next, uh, property in, uh, Pennsylvania, and one that they see really as a crown jewel for them. Um, the owners, uh, Frank and Jeanne, have been at this for a very long time. It is a family-based company. Uh, they employ over an eight, oh, I believe it's right around eight hundred people right now throughout their company, um, and they are not flippers. They are developers who then own and operate these properties, so they will be onsite at this location throughout, uh, the entirety of the construction process and into operations. So they have a, um, a hotel unit that runs the hotel facilities, they have a marketing group that does all of their marketing, they bring in their own chefs and run the restaurants themselves, um, and they are, um, as experienced as we could possibly ask for in this kind of a, of a very unique situation with a lot of very complicated buildings.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Zellers, could you just review for the record, a- as everyone who's been to these meetings for a while knows, we would typically be the last entity to vote, after the school district and the township, actually, after both. Could you just walk us through why we need to vote prior to that township?
Sure. Um, and not being, um, uh, make sure I choose my words a little better this time than earlier. Uh, again, I apologize for that, but, um, essentially, I want to pull the calendar up here. The township, um, is required to hold a public hearing to, uh, put this ordinance, uh, before the pu- the, their constituency. Um, and my understanding is based on the statute, that is, it is, the process is delineated. So this is not us doing this, because it is the actual TIF Act that says the other taxing bodies have to go, and then the, um, the township goes through their process of the public ord- the hearing for the ordinance, followed by their vote to approve.
Great. So unlike the ALERTA, where we have flexibility, this is prescribed.
It's, it is letter of the law, yes.
Okay, terrific. Mr. Nugent, would you like to offer any comments on this?
Uh, just, uh, a short line, I think that, uh, I really have a lot of admiration for the commitment of the township and the school district to get this done. As people have mentioned, it's been taxed exempt for nearly twenty years, and it's been a real, uh, we've done four or five other tips, and this is one that kind of represents the most, uh, serious attention to getting it right and the numbers in place that are fair to all the parties. So, uh, subsequent to the approval of the commissioners and the township, it will come to the authority of our board to approve it, uh, later in February. So it's been a, a good experience, and we have great, uh, hopes for, uh, what the Landmark Development Company has planned for us, for the area. My hat's off, it's actually, like, for what they've worked through, load these fundamentals.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner?
Um, Mr. Cohen, I understand it wasn't a unanimous vote at the school district. Can you speak about that a little?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. Um, the school district voted early this week, and the school district had been kept apprised, um, of the process as the TIF was developed. By way of brief background, there was a TIF Working Group, or TIF Committee, if you will, which had representation from the county, the school district, and the township as well. And at the vote on Tuesday night, the vote was eight to one. The one individual who voted against it, um, his main concern, the way he expressed it, was the length of term of the TIF being twenty years, where he thought that was either less than optimal and/or excessive, and that was, um, the core of that individual's, um, position as to why they voted against it. But the vote was eight to one in favor.
And the length of term was a negotiated process with the developer and with the TIF Committee?
Right. And also going back to the, um, Commonwealth's TIF statute, it is for a period of up to twenty years, and as you said, Commissioner, it was part of a negotiated process. There is the potential that the TIF might be less than twenty years. It's a combination of which happens first, either the twenty-year period or the amount of money for the project that was talked about earlier, being given back via the, um, tax revenue, which is generated, being given back through the RDA to the developer, um, which of those happens first. So not to oversell this point, it could be less than twenty years, but very likely that it will be twenty years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner, if you could just clarify one of the comments you made, that currently there's less than a two percent commercial tax base. Was that specific to your ward that you represent?
No, it's the township.
So township?
The township is already ninety-eight percent filled out, and of that ninety-eight percent, only about two, two and a half percent is commercial. That's it. Everything else is residential.
Wow.
Which is why we spent so much time rewriting our zoning code, because we had to make it a little bit more inviting for business to come in.
And as, do you have a new comprehensive plan in Cheltenham Township?
Uh, that's, the n- the next one is being worked on. I mean, it's part of a longer process, but yes, now that we've finally gotten the first one done with the rezoning, we'll start on a new one.
And does our planning commission have a contract with you? We do, right? Okay. I thought so. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, any public comment? All right. Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Congratulations. We look forward to a tour as it moves along. All right, we have a number of, uh, reappointments to some of our, uh, commissions and other entities, and we are going to start with the Montgomery County Conservation District. Is there a motion to reappoint the following individuals to the Board of Directors of the Montgomery County Conservation District? Andrew Frankenfeld as the Farmer Director, and Monica Bersik and Timothy Woodrow as the Public Directors, each serving for a term beginning January first, two thousand nineteen, through December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, and each serving at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the state conservation district law?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Lawrence?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gale. Any board comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, the Norristown, uh, or Montgomery County Norristown Public Library Board. Is there a motion that Kathy Ann Sweeney, Paul McCann, Mark Turetsky, and Kelly Isit be reappointed to the Montgomery County Norristown Public Library for a term to begin immediately and to expire on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Lawrence?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gale. Any board comments? Any public comments? All right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Uh, next, Aging and Adult Council. Is there a motion that Alma Jacobs and Dorothy McKay be reappointed to the Montgomery County Aging and Adult Services Advisory Council for terms to expire on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, and each serving at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Lawrence?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gale. Any board comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Uh, Montgomery County Workforce Development Board. Is there a motion that Richard D. Lewis be appointed to the Montgomery County Workforce Development Board to serve a term that begins immediately and expires on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, serving at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Gale.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Uh, any board comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. And finally, the Montgomery County Open Space Board. Is there a motion that Michael Stokes be appointed to the Montgomery County Open Space Board for a term to begin on January first, two thousand nineteen, and to expire on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Gale.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any nega- any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Do we need to stop for the...
We can go for the next.
Okay. Mr. Soltizziak?
Uh, yes, we have six advertisements today. The first is an RFP on behalf of Health and Human Services for an evidence-based program curriculum for drug and alcohol, alcohol prevention for students in kindergarten through fifth grade. This program will provide a more sustainable approach to drug and alcohol prevention by training school teachers to deliver evidence-based programs proven to be effective in reducing antisocial behavior in students in kindergarten through fifth grade. Contract will be awarded to the highest-rated provider. Number two is an RFP on behalf of Health and Human Services for an evidence-based program curriculum for a drug and alcohol prevention, uh, program for students in kindergarten through twelfth grade. This program will provide a social, emotional learning curriculum for students in kindergarten through fifth grade and provide youth violence and substance use prevention curriculum and training for, uh, students in sixth through twelfth grades. A contract will be awarded to the highest-rated provider. Number three is an RFP on behalf of Health and Human Services for a program development consultant for the Managed Care Solutions Division. The successful, uh, provider will have a behavioral health professional and clinical administrative background that covers a variety of activities such as program planning, program evaluation, monitoring, and special program initiatives. A contract will be awarded to the highest-rated provider. Number four is an RFP on behalf of the Coroner's Office to upgrade the cooler and freezer area in the county morgue. The successful provider will develop a modification plan for the morgue cooler and freezer that will maximize the available space and provide the necessary equipment for modification. The contract will be awarded to the highest-rated provider. Number five is an RFP, uh, on behalf of Voter Services for hauling, uh, voting, uh, machines. The system, uh, the service will provide for the hauling of voting machines for the twenty nineteen primary and general elections with optional annual renewals. The contract will be awarded to the highest-rated provider. And number six is a bid on behalf of assets and infrastructure for the construction of the Fledgling Field Playground at Mill Grove. A, uh, construction services will provide for a new playground along the existing Audubon Loop Trail at Mill Grove, and a contract will be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. And as a reminder, all bids and RFPs are available on the county's public purchase website at moncoopa.org/purchasing.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the preceding request for an advertisement of a bid and RFPs as described by the Chief Operating Officer, Mr. Lee Soltizziak, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Lawrence?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gale. Any board comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Awards of contract. I guess we're going to pause, right?
Please.
Yes, we will pause. Okay, great. All right, we will continue with awards of contract. Mr. Soltizziak?
Yes, we have, uh, a number of awards and, uh, contract today. The first is a contract renewal for Human Resources for Program Administration Services. The award goes to PMA Management Corporation in the amount of ninety-five thousand dollars. The contract provides for third-party administration services for the county's, uh, workers' compensation claims. Contract is for the period of January first, two thousand nineteen, through December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. This is the second of two available renewals. The second is a contract renewal for the Controller's Office for accounting, accounting and auditing services. The award goes to Malle LLC in the amount of eighty-six thousand dollars. The contract provides for accounting and auditing services for the Controller's Office. This is the first of two optional annual renewals. Number three is a renewal for voter services for poll books. The award goes to Barton and Cooney in the amount of thirty-five thousand and twenty dollars. The contract is, uh, provides for voter registration poll books for the twenty nineteen primary and general elections. This is the fourth available for annual renewals. Number four is a contract renewal for voter services also, and this is for election supplies. The award goes to William Penn Printing Company in the amount of thirty thousand dollars. This contract provides for election day supplies for the twenty nineteen primary and general elections. This is the fourth of four available annual renewals. Number five is a contract renewal for voter services for balling, ballot printing services. The award goes to Reliance Graphics in the amount of thirty thousand dollars. The contract provides for printing of specimen ballots for the twenty nineteen primary and general elections. This is the fourth of four available annual renewals. Number six is a contract amendment for IT, uh, for Microsoft Certified SharePoint Partner. The award goes to RSM US in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars. The contract provides for services to augment development staff on an as-needed basis for the SharePoint projects and increase collaborative and document management functionality for various county departments. This is the third of four optional annual renewals. Uh, number seven is a contract renewal also for IT for a Microsoft Certified CRM Partner. Uh, the award goes to RSM US LLP in the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This contract provides for services to augment development staff on an as-needed basis for CRM projects and increase collaborative and document management functionality for various county departments. This is the third of four optional annual renewals. Number eight is a contract renewal for housing and community development for call center services. The award goes the United Way of Greater Philadelphia and Southern New Jersey, uh, The award goes to United Way of Greater Philadelphia and Southern New Jersey and Philadelphia PA, or of Philadelphia PA, sorry, in the amount of $142,809. The contract provides for your way home coordinated entry system call center operations. This is the first of three optional annual renewals. Number nine is a contract renewal and amendment for assets and infrastructure. The award goes to Shred It USA JV LLC in the amount of $49,126. This contract provides for the paper destruction services for all county offices for the 2019 term, and the amendment provides for additional paper destruction services required during the initial three-year contract term. The amendment also reawards the contract to Shred It USA JV LLC of Lake Forest, Illinois, who acquired the original vendor, Shred One Security Corporation of Huntington Valley in 2018. This is the first of two optional annual renewals. Number 10 is a contract award and amendment for assets and infrastructure for paper products. The award goes to Veretti Corporation in the amount of $78,264. The contract provides for restroom paper products for use at all county-owned properties. The amendment provides for additional paper products required after the delayed dispenser unit installations. The products are available through a PA CoStarz contract, which is good through January 1st, 2019 through December 31st, 2019. Number 11 is a contract award for public safety for power supply. The award goes to Core Power and Environmental in the amount of $165,772. The contract provides for the emergency replacement of the uninterrupted power supply system at the Emergency Operations Center. The system replacement includes a one-year full system warranty. Number 12 is a contract award for adult probation for a vehicle. The award goes to Kelly Automotive Group in the amount of $27,030. The contract provides for a 2019 Nissan Pathfinder for the Adult Probation Department for offender visitations and offender transportation by parole officers. The vehicle is available on a CoStarz contract. Number 13 is a contract award for the District Attorney also for vehicles. The award goes to Apple Chevrolet in the amount of $55,172. The contract provides for two 2019 Chevy Traverse vehicles for the use by county detectives. The vehicles are also available on a PA CoStarz contract. Number 14 is a contract award for assets and infrastructure for software. The award goes to E-Biller Inc. in the amount of $147,448.64. The contract provides for the implementation and subscription costs for project management software. This software will be used to manage and analyze county capital projects. The software is available through a GSA contract. Number 15 is a contract award for the Sheriff's Department. This is for equipment. The award goes to Med ENG LLC in the amount of $31,864. This contract provides for full-body bomb suit for use by the Sheriff's Department Bomb Squad. The equipment is available through a GSA contract. Number 16 is a contract award also for the Sheriff for equipment. The award goes to Whitmer Public Safety Group in the amount of $32,334.40. The contract provides for 35 concealable bulletproof vests with accessories. The equipment is available through a PA State contract. Number 17 is a contract award for the Sheriff for software. The award goes to multiple providers in the amount of $78,844. The contract provides for the establishment of an e-filing system that integrates into the platoonary case management software and the software services and support are proprietary to each provider. And the providers are Paperless Solutions Inc. in the amount of $42,200, and Soft Code Inc. in the amount of $32,644. Number 18 is a contract award for assets and infrastructure for engineering services. The award goes to GZA Environmental Inc. in the amount of $49,484. The contract provides for geotechnical engineering services for the Butler Pike Culvert Sinkhole located between Germantown Pike and Plymouth Road in Plymouth and White Marsh Townships. The quotes were requested from multiple firms on the county's on-call engineering list. Number 19 is a contract award for the Planning Commission for a consultant. The award goes to Whitman Wright Quart and Associates LLC in the amount of $75,000. The contract provides for Montgomery County Trail Access Diversity and Awareness Plan. The implementation of this plan will increase the diversity of trail users, increase the awareness, visibility, ease of access to the county trail system, and modernize the trail designs to consider the changing diverse needs of the communities the trails pass through. The RFP was viewed by 14 providers with seven responses received, and the contract is awarded to the highest rated provider. Number 20 is a contract award for Health and Human Services for advertising. The award goes to Clear Channel Outdoor in the amount of $45,500. The contract provides for rental of billboard space in Montgomery County for outreach services related to the gambling prevention and overdose awareness efforts. The RFP was viewed by 15 providers with three responses received, and the contract is awarded to the highest rated provider. Number 21 is a contract amendment for assets and infrastructure for design services. The award goes to WJ Castle &amp; Associates in the amount of $6,000. The contract provides design service for the rehabilitation of County Bridge 231, Peavy Road over the Perkeomen Creek in Upper Hanover Township. The amendment provides for additional field changes related to the additional deterioration of the bridge supports discovered after construction commenced and for additional construction supervision time needed to account for the weather delays. The revised contract value is $48,500. Number 22 is a contract amendment for assets and infrastructure for construction. The award is made to Clearwater Construction Inc. in the amount of $18,360.99. The contract provides for the replacement of the Montgomery County Bridge Number Eight, Morris Road Avenue over Mill Creek in Lower Marion Township. The amendment provides for additional field changes related to the utility delays, abutment conflicts, bicycle safe grate replacement, and additional sealer required for the superstructure deck. The revised contract value is $1,364,360.99. Number 23 is a contract amendment for assets and infrastructure for inspection services for Traffic Planning and Design Inc. in the amount of $49,508.25. The contract provides for full-time onsite construction oversight and inspection during the reconstruction of County Bridge Eight located on Morris Road Avenue over Mill Creek in Lower Marion Township. The amendment provides for the vendor's provision of inspection services of construction work for the extended duration of the project resulting from utility delays, abutment conflicts, bicycle safe grate replacement, and additional sealer for the superstructure deck. The revised contract value is $149,439.25. Number 24 is a contract amendment for assets and infrastructure for architectural services. The award goes to Kimmel Bogret Architecture in the amount of $27,915. The contract provides for architectural design services for the Mill Grove Visitor Center. The amendment provides for changes to the design scope relating to preparation of the project sewage planning module and investigation and documentation that the Audubon requested changes to the construction scope relating to the installation of the pavilion roof and the electrical plant. The revised contract value is $683,915. And number 25, there are three contracts, six contract renewals, and two amendments for Health and Human Services and the providers and services are... And finally, there are awards of contract for the Southeastern PA Regional Task Force. The first is a contract renewal for support services for Geotech, I'm sorry, GeoGra IT Division EBA Engineering Inc. in the amount of $30,000. The contract provides maintenance and technical support services as needed for the operation of the Southeastern Regional Automated Road Center Line Data Loading QA QC Process for the regional counties. The renewal is for one year for a period of January 1st, 2019 through December 31st, 2019. Services are available through a PA CoStarz contract. Number two is a contract award for training. The award goes to Jesse Taylor LTD in the amount of $31,135. The contract provides for bomb technician training courses to defeat homemade explosives, and the, this law enforcement sensitive training is for the regional counties, and the training is proprietary. And number three is a contract award for video services. The award goes to Active View Corporation in the amount of $69,653.60. The contract provides for the software upgrade and installation of a new video wall server for the City of Philadelphia. Services are proprietary. Number four is a contract award for planning services. The award goes to Municipal Resources Inc. in the amount of $115,795. The contract provides for a strategic plan that will organize, deliver, and, will organize and deliver a comprehensive report and a series of workshops addressing future county-wide fire protection and emergency medical services concerns as a planning tool for fire chiefs, EMS chiefs, municipal managers, and elected officials for Chester County. The RFP was viewed by 36 providers with seven responses received, and the contract is awarded to the highest rated provider. And that is all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the preceding awards of contract as well as the contracts on behalf of the Southeast Pennsylvania Regional Task Force as described by the Chief Operating Officer, Mr. Lee Soltziak, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gale. Any board comments? Any public comments?
Hi, Colleen Brachia for Townments and Township. I'm looking at this, and I keep seeing these amendments all the time. Maybe I'm just not getting it, but I don't understand why somebody can go and look at a project and then miss all these little pieces. And some of them are not so little. So I just, you know, I tried to find the engineering companies that you usually use. You know, I just don't, I just don't get it. I just need that explained. You know, on Bridge Eight, you know, did you know ahead of time that you were gonna do all those other things? You know what I'm saying? It's like, where's the planning here? Where's the foresight? I just don't see it. That, I think that's, that's the thing. And also, highest rated provider versus lowest responsible bidder. That was not explained to me yet. And I did look at the procurement policy, and I couldn't find it. So those are just a couple of things I'd like to have clarified.
Thank you.
Okay, well, you told me that I, that you would send me information, and I don't get anything, so if you could please really send me the information, then I wouldn't have to keep coming up here and asking you.
Send it again. Thank you. Any other public comment?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
First, first, I wanted to inform the Commissioners and Solicitor that I was contacted by someone who viewed...
Ms. Mickman, this is, this is public, this is comment about the, on the contracts, contract approval. This is not general public comment.
It's not general?
No.
Oh, I thought you said general.
No.
Okay, I'll wait.
Thank you. All right, any other public comment on the contracts? All right. Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, now is general public comment. Ms. Mickman?
Okay, okay, Commissioners. First, I wanted to inform you, the Commissioners and Solicitor, that I was contacted by someone who viewed me on a previous Commissioners' meeting and recognized that the recording was edited, preventing full transparency for viewership and disclosure of the meetings and of the resident voices. So the residents provide comments as their civil duty, and it is prudent and imperative that the, that the meetings not be edited. So I'm making that request. Next, I am compelled to bring germane information to your attention that I recently learned the Domestic Relations Director, who is hired by the Commissioners, sent an October 2018 letter to the County Assistance Office intentionally misrepresenting computer entries and as...
Ms. Mickman?
Yes?
As has been explained before to you, that the topics for public comment must be germane to county business, that means business that comes before the County Commissioners for a vote or will likely to come up for a vote in the future. As has been explained to you numerous times, the issues that you raised relate to a judicial branch of county government.
Now, I don't believe the Domestic Relations Director is hired by the judiciary.
This has been explained to you on a number of occasions previously, both verbally and in writing, and unfortunately, this is not something that is germane to county business.
Well, it absolutely is germane because what occurred was, excuse me, but I would like to voice my opinion. What occurred was that I was denied a title...
You are not going to keep your comments relevant?
This is relevant.
And germane to county business, which has been explained to you.
This is absolutely relevant.
Then I'm gonna have to ask security to escort you out.
Well, I've already been denied my title to ADA rights. This is the complaint that I filed against the county, and all of you are included in it. Now, ADA is germane to the county, to all business, and due to the bad faith and radical conduct...
I'm gonna have to ask you to stop. This is, these are topics that we have responded to you in writing on previous occasions.
I've not been responded to this in writing at all, so please don't bring up false, don't make false statements.
Ms. Mickman, please, if you can, please limit your comments to matters that are, that are before the Commissioners or that may come up for Commissioners for a vote. Otherwise, I'm gonna have to ask you to step down.
Well, when will the voting come up for hiring various employees or, you know, in their contracts?
Ms. Mickman, the director that you were speak of is not something that is gonna be voted on at any point.
Oh, well, then what, then what type of recourse is there if there's employees in the county that are hired through the Commissioners and they are abusing their authority and using their position to viciously retaliate against residents? You tell me. Because at this point, that's what has occurred, and I have a minor child whose child support was terminated. Now, this is against federal regulations. It's against the letter of the law. It's against state law, and so I would like to know then who it is and when it is that this can be addressed.
As has been described to you previously...
It's never been, no, actually, it's not.
Ms. Mickman, I've, I have personally addressed some of these concerns to you in the past.
Okay, well, therefore, since I'm not being permitted to address stuff that is germane, I'm just saying that it is very disappointing and troubling that the Commissioners are disrespecting the law and their oath, eroding the integrity of their official office. They've marginalized me and other residents and are encouraging employee retaliation by neglecting oversight. The county is in disrepute and they're shamefully displaying corrupt hospitality. So there needs to be some accountability here, and I'm referring to things that the Commissioners have direct oversight with. So I know that you've interfered with my making a general comment, and there's no reason for that unless you're trying to bury something and cover it up.
Thank you, Ms. Mickman.
Please get this county into accountability, and I would like to see the integrity restored. And remember, elections are coming. Elections are coming soon.
Thank you, Ms. Mickman. Is there other public comment? Just so you're ready, you have five minutes for public comment.
Hello, Mr. Stein. We have emailed back and forth. My name's Diane Gochin. I live in Huntington Valley, and I had requested data on the sheriff's sales in Montgomery County. And what I got was a series of PDF files with all the documents from all the sheriff's sales, and I asked for an Excel spreadsheet and the distribution of, and the appropriations of where the money actually goes from the sheriff's sales, and I never received that. There was another attorney that picked up where you left off, and I can't recall his name, and I still have not gotten the spreadsheet of what happens to the sheriff's sale money from the county. I keep getting told it goes into a general fund. My other question is, can this county or sheriff's office function without the money from the sheriff's sales, which in my estimation, I did an unscientific review of it, 60% of the foreclosures in this county, and there's something like 10,000 of them, are a result of the family court abuse? And I'm one of those. I've paid taxes in this state for 40 years. I've lived in this area my whole life. I'm 61, and I've never seen such disgusting judicial criminality and corruption, starting with Judge Branca, Del Richie, Weilheimer, Wall, Tilson. I have a Commonwealth lawsuit that is now on its way to the Pennsylvania Supreme Court regarding asset stripping in family court. And I don't believe that you could run this county without stealing the personal assets of families. And there are people sitting here that are, are victims of this, and so I'm asking for an accounting. Can you run this county without taking our homes and our income? My case was churned for 11 years. I had no child support issues, no custody issues. In fact, my ex-husband was stunned at what they did to us, that everything that we worked for our whole lives was stolen by judicial criminals. Branca is a criminal. He is not a judge. Del Richie is a criminal. He is not a judge. Carluccio, that owns this building, Tornata Carluccio, these are criminals that are stealing and running this county, not just this county it's not just happening in, but the family court across Pennsylvania. I've been doing this for 11 years. I've been to Harrisburg. I know people at Judicial Conduct Board. I'm probably one of the only citizens that have been actually in front of the Judicial Conduct Board. Robert Gracie and Mr. Massa were both removed. They did not resign. They were removed for misconduct because they have not been protecting us from judicial criminality. There's no oversight here at all. I lost two homes, a business, my kid's college fund. They destroyed my children and my credit, okay? And this went into the federal court, and the federal court judges are from these county courts. It's one big coffee klatch. I have thousands of pages on the judiciary in this state, and it'll be coming out in a book? And if you don't want to be part of it, I think you need to answer to what is going on here. I noticed that you formed the Family Justice Advisory Board. Nobody asked me to be on the board. How did you decide who was gonna be on the board? Are you getting paid for being on the board? And also, I did a write-to-know on Bruce Castor. I understand you get $85,000 a year or something being Commissioners here, and it's supposed to be a full-time job. He was up in Center County representing Stacy Parks Miller, who's no longer DA. What's going on here with the money in this county? Are you full-time? Do you work full-time as Commissioners? You're a physician. Do you work still as a physician or are you just a county commissioner? So I had a friend that ran for county commissioner for your seat. He came in and applied for it, and you got appointed out of nowhere. You were on the Judicial Conduct Board, and I don't know how you got on from there to there to there. You're going from one board to the next. There's a lot of other people that need jobs in this county. Where did you come from? You came from Temple University. You're passing the buck here between yourselves, and you're robbing the people here blind. My name is Diane Gochin, G-O-C-H-I-N. I want answers. I want to know what's going on with this family court. 11 years, you churned my case? And I'm just one of thousands, and, and you're gonna tell me this isn't county business? And I'm just one of thousands, and you're going to tell me this isn't county business? You're on the family, if I want to be on your advisory committee, because I know more about the family justice system than any judge or any of you sitting here.
While your comments regarding budgetary matters may be relevant and germane to county business, both the sheriff's sale process and the judicial, and matters regarding the judiciary are obviously not matters germane to county business.
That's what you think. You can't run this county without the money. Can you run this county without the money coming out of the judicial system? Can you? I want an answer. How much of your budget is dependent on what's coming out of the judiciary, out of the family court? It's a $2 billion a year industry in Pennsylvania alone. $2 billion a year. I'd say you got several million-
We have received your multiple write-to-know requests, and we have responded to your write-to-know requests with the documents that-
No, you did not.
Ma'am, we have documentation, and if you believe that you have not been given those information, bad information-
He didn't answer my last email.
Your five minutes are up.
Drain the swamp.
Thank you.
Drain the friggin' swamp here.
And thank you, Mr. Gale. I've been following you. I really appreciate your tenacity and what's happening in this country and in this county and this state. You have my good. Bye for Governor.
Any other public comment?
I don't know if I can follow that, but I'm going to try.
When I had my meet, oh, Pauline Bratche of Townments and Township. I always forget that part. I figured you'd know me by now. When I had my meeting with Dean Dorton, the creative financial, no, chief financial officer, I did, he handed me the budget, but I didn't have time to study it because we were right there in the meeting. So in the few weeks since, I was looking at this, and, you know, I, maybe I just don't know how to read a budget, you know? Maybe I need another meeting with him so that he can explain things more fully. What I don't understand is how there can be unappropriated balances under the expenditure section. That means to me that you didn't spend it and you had no plans to spend it. So at the end of the year, if you have money left over, it should then go to the beginning of the next year. I mean, makes sense. So when I look at this, I don't see that happening. I see different amounts. Sometimes it's actually more, sometimes it's less. So that is one thing. A balanced budget, this is not a balanced budget, because if you keep having money left over, then it's not balanced. You can't just stick a number in there and call it unappropriated balance and then make the numbers match so that it's a zero. The other thing that was very interesting to me is in 2017 was the first time you received the $3,300,000 from the $5 vehicle. And it looks like in 17 that the money was spent. Now, when I had my meeting with Mr. Dorton, he said, no, the first time any money was spent was when it went for the grants. But right here, I made copies of this particular page from the other years. It showed that it's spent, that it's spent, because maintenance of roads and bridges, But then magically, in 2018, that $3,300,000 that is shown as spent is here again as the cash balance for January 1. So was it spent or was it not spent? So where did this $4 million get paid from if it wasn't from the $3 million that you got from, through Pendon, from the residents for the $5? A lot of this just doesn't make sense. Also, the 2018 budget, at the end, in the motor vehicle registration fund section, you have unappropriated balance of $2,989,600. And when you go to 2019, your cash balance is $1,839,780. So what happened to the $1,149,820? And I thought to myself, what happened between December 31st and January 1st? I thought, well, maybe you threw a fabulous New Year's Eve party and just didn't invite everybody. So, you know, these are, there's a lot, and there's a lot more. I'm not going to go through all of them. It's late, tired. It was a quasi-interesting meeting, but I will follow up at the next meeting with this. And I would hope that in the meantime, between now and February 7th, that somebody can explain this to me, if Dean can get back to me and answer these questions about how does an unappropriated balance, this money left over, does not carry to the next year as the cash on hand? Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Yes.
Hi, I'm Nikki from IT. Most of you all know me. I just want to say thank you for the parent parental policy. I reached out to Donna last year when me and my husband were going to adopt, and we looked at it, and we were like, all right, how are we going to make this work with me, wanting to spend time, obviously, with the baby and things like that? And then we found out we were pregnant, so that worked out. But Donna and I have talked a lot, and I, it means, I can't explain how much it means to me personally, knowing that he'll be able to stay home too and spend time with us. So I just want to say thank you to guys, thank you to you guys, and thank you to senior staff. It means more than you could ever know.
Thank you. And congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, any other public comment? All right. Okay. Closing, Commissioner comments? Commissioner Lawrence?
Manifest is coming up on March 12th from 9:00 to 1:00 p.m. at the Greater Philadelphia Expo Center. You can register at www-manifest.org, and it's an opportunity for our manufacturers to meet with students and learn about career paths in the manufacturing industry. We have more manufacturing jobs than any county in Pennsylvania.
Great. All right, thank you. With that, I will announce that our next meeting is February 7th, 2019, and take a motion to adjourn the January 17th, 2019 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Lawrence. Seconded by Commissioner Gale. Any board comments or public comments? Move to a vote? Any negative votes? Meeting is adjourned, and we'll invite Controller Sanchez to the dais and begin salary board.
Good afternoon, members of the salary board. You should have in front of you a copy of the final salary board list. It is a three-page document dated Wednesday, January 16th, 2019, with a timestamp of 3:16 p.m. Of note, we have five retirees. Anthony Cieri from Assets and Infrastructure after 22 years. Jerry Clark from Assets and Infrastructure after 15 years. Helen Schuler Blair from Courts after 39 years. Maxine Carson from the Law Library after four years. And Barbara Mendel from Managed Care after 11 years. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for salary board consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Perdue. 39 years, huh?
Yes.
That's impressive.
I have a comment. Where is the salary sheet that wasn't attached to the solace that we have?
First of all, we are not at the point where there's public comment here at this point.
Let me get a motion on the table first, please. Is there a motion to approve the January 17th, 2019 salary board presentation is given by Director of Human Resources, Ms. Donna Perdue, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same? So moved. Moved by Controller Sanchez?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comments? Any public comment? Ma'am, you may-
I just want to know, I can't see what you're saying on the salary sheet. Was it supposed to be attached here or there? Could I get three hundred, the other ladies that were here?
Once we vote on this, I'll go back. Thank you.
Okay, any other public comment? All right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn the January 17th, 2019 meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board? So moved. Moved by Controller Sanchez?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Public comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.